...this week with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. President. Here. Your adjutant, Mr. Pritchett. Here. Here. Questions for modifications? This is approval of your agenda.
We do have one modification based on yesterday's work session. We'd like to add as item 3B, a call for hearing on Tuesday, October 6th at 10:30 a.m. on a proposed acquisition of donated property at Lake Crescent.
Move to approve the Florida Fed agenda. Okay, I'll second discussion. All in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Public comment on the agenda items. See no one consent agenda.
Thank you. Item 1A is approval of vouchers for the week of September 14. Item 1B is approval of minutes for the weeks of September 8th and September 15th. And item 1C is a proclamation recognizing September as National State in Clowdon County Recovery Month.
Move to approve the consent agenda? I'll second. Have a question. I'm not sure, Mark, I don't know if this is a question for you or Trish's a question for you, but there's an item on the minutes for the week of September 7th through 11th that I was recused from. And so, is it proper for me to vote on the, to approve the minutes as a part of the consent agenda? Or should I abstain from that vote and we remove this particular set of minutes and treat it separately? I just don't simply know the answer to that question. So who else is best equipped to answer? I don't know.
I would recommend that you abstain and treat it separately.
Okay.
I'm going to have to remove them completely because I have to abstain because I wasn't here.
Okay. So we will leave, perhaps we get the pro temp commissioner back to at a future date approve that set of minutes, I would presume.
That would be one way of proceeding.
Okay.
Will we have to appoint him then again because he has a specific term and duty that expires once the contract is approved?
Right.
Maybe, maybe we'll take that under advisement, we'll remove that particular week's minutes from the consent agenda if that's acceptable to my colleagues. And then we'll vote on the consent agenda and we'll address that question and figure out how we, what a way to proceed is.
Is there a friendly amendment then to the motions about consent agenda?
I'll just make, I'll just make my own right. No, you made the motion.
Yeah, so accept a friendly amendment to the motion that you made.
Okay. Everybody understand what we're about to do? All in favor of the consent agenda with, with the exception of the minutes for the week of September 7th through 11th? All in favor? Aye, aye, opposed, motion carries. All right, reports and presentations. Looks like the Recreation and Conservation Office is going to present a Bravo Award for the Spruce Railroad E-Tunnel Restoration Project. Good morning.
Good morning. Were you gonna tell them about it?
Good morning. I'm the Director of the Recreation and Conservation Office. I'm from Olympia. And it was a delightful drive up this morning to walk you completely until I get to Clowdon County. So, dear today, I'm up here to recognize the great partnership that we have with Clowdon County and to award you a Bravo Award. We give out grants for incredible projects and our Bravo Award recognizes those projects that are so spectacular because they rank number one in a particular category. And this year it's for the continuing work on the Olympic Discovery Trail. And in particular, it's for a grant to continue working around Lake Crescent and in particular for the tunnel work to, working with National Park and you guys to finish, or at least next phase. I think you, I think Rich say you have one more phase. We have an incredible relationship with you in terms of the amount of grants that we've given you. I think you have received about six grants for the Olympic Discovery Trail over the last many years. And when I look at the history of my agency and all of the various people in Clowdon County, we've given around five, 315 grants, building just about $100 million since my agency was created in the 1960s. So, great investment in outdoor recreation and sound recovery. I just want to tell you, there are three ingredients to a fabulous project. The first one is vision. And the people who set up the Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program had a lot of vision. They set it up in the 1990s and it was to invest in places for outdoor recreation or to acquire lands for wildlife habitat in riparian areas before they were lost to development. And outdoor recreation is one of our biggest economic drivers in the state. About $22 billion a year is spent in outdoor recreation. And you guys know that probably better than most because of the amenities here. So the vision of the people who set up that program, and more importantly, because we require a 50% match, you guys have to have some vision for your community to match that money. So, kudos to you for the vision here. The second part is funding. As I mentioned, there's been a lot of money that we've invested. And I think the next time you are with your legislators, you should thank them for funding the Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program and for your citizens to continue to provide the match to those grants. The third thing that makes a great project is partnerships. And I have come up here on a couple of occasions to help with our partnership on the Olympic Discovery Trail. And I'm so pleased to see that it's continuing to move forward with all the various relationships with the Parks Service, Forest Service, the DNR, the cities. We have a lot of work going in right now to replace the approaches to the trestle over on the, must be the Dungeness. With the tribe over there doing a lot of the work, we've found some money over there. So partnerships are huge for outdoor recreation and conservation. So, thank you very much for being a partner. So, here is the Bravo Award for this particular grant, which is over $400,000 coming to work on these tunnels. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I couldn't get the mental files open. If you wouldn't mind giving us your name and once you say it, I'm sure I will, the file will come open immediately.
I'm Kayleen Cottigan and I am the Director of the Recreation and Conservation Office. And I've worked with, I'm not trying to work with any of you directly, but I've worked with all of your predecessors. So, we have a long relationship there.
Thank you very much for making the journey this morning. Thank you for the work. And there are other people, staff folks here in the room that are very deserving. So we appreciate you taking the journey up here today. Stay awhile.
I know. I think Rich is gonna talk a little bit about the chairman.
If I could just take a moment of your time. There was some key elements for this being the top rated grant in the state. And that involved creating partnerships and some of those partners are here today. We asked Olympic National Park to be here and Lisa Turasek was going to be here, but I don't see her. And that was a key partnership. Lisa and I made the grant presentation and the fact that she was there with her park uniform and hat on was, was very critical to us getting the high rating that day. And then the other key element of partnership that went into this grant was the Peninsula Trails Coalition put up actual cash amount into this grant and then an equal amount of work that they intended to do on this particular project. And I know Andy Stevenson is here, former Vice President, or President of the Peninsula Trails Coalition. So I'd like to thank Andy and recognize him for his efforts also.
Thank you. Thanks, Andy.
So, another thing about this project was the partner went through a $100,000 match for this, which will help us and it's gonna reduce the amount of match that we have to produce for this project. And the project is actually in the design phase right now at Western Federal Lands, who are overseeing the construction and putting out the actual contract for it. So this is gonna be a very exciting thing. Hopefully at the end of this time next year, we'll be looking at another half a mile of trail open to the, to the McPhee Tunnel, which is the larger tunnel, just a beautiful structure once it's open. And then you'll be able to actually have a restored tunnel that goes through and behind the Devil's Punch Bowl. And the project we're finishing right now out of the lake will get wheelchairs down to the lake with an 88 accessible trail. This will get them another half a mile along the trail into the first tunnel and pass the Devil's Punch Bowl, which they could never get to or pass through before. So that's gonna be pretty exciting when we get this done next year. So, I'd like to thank our COO, I'd like to thank Kayleen for coming up today. We'll probably be seeing you again in about a year to ask for one more grant for this, this particular section of trail so we can get it done. Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate the work. Next is a proclamation that we just approved, recognizing September as Recovery Month. It is a very lengthy proclamation. So I'll just read the last paragraph of it. And this, of course, deals with substance, chemical dependency, substance abuse and chem- chemical dependency kinds of things. I'll read the final paragraph. "The National Recovery Month celebrates individuals and families in recovery and professionals who dedicate themselves to helping those whose lives are seriously affected by behavioral health challenges. This year's theme, 'Join the Voices for Recovery: Visible, Vocal, and Valuable,' invites each of us to join the recovery community in supporting quality treatment programs and reducing the stigma that discourages many people from ever seeking treatment. It also honors the community-based organizations that ensure quality of life and ongoing support and success for those in recovery. Now, therefore, the Board of Clowdon County Commissioners hereby recognize the month of September as Recovery Month in Clowdon County and encourage all residents to promote the benefits of treatment and recovery. Signed this 22nd day of September 2015, members of the Board of County Commissioners." So, I think Jude is here. I don't think I know Jude is here.
I think that will get signed and sent back down.
Yes, indeed. It's a good idea.
It is signed. Good. Okay.
And here it is.
Okay. I have a couple comments I wanted to make as well.
Sure.
Trying to be as lengthy as the proclamation. First of all, thank you for your support of Recovery Month. It means a lot to those who struggle with behavioral health issues and their families and providers who've helped them. This year, Recovery Month is a, is a national event. The Governor signed a proclamation for the state and they are this year really bringing together chemical dependency and mental health, which really works because that's exactly what we're doing at the services level. In the next year, we're really integrating those two and probably have long needed to be integrated. A lot of people do suffer from both of the conditions. And so, this is all moving in a very positive direction. At the same time, as we look across the community and the nation, there is something of a dismal picture, particularly with the heroin epidemic that's in evidence everywhere. Also here in our community, we have some ongoing challenges for those in early recovery, particularly around employment opportunities for them and safe and sober housing across the community. At the same time, there's some really strong and positive things going on. The community's increasingly engaged in understanding and addressing substance abuse issues. Port Angeles CAM or Citizens Action Network is an example of this, bringing citizens and professionals from all sectors together to look at and address the problems. This month, Recovery Month, NAMI and Peninsula Behavioral Health sponsored a compassion rally and a suicide prevention march. We had an overdose awareness march also. And just last weekend, Recovery and Remembrance Walk to honor those in recovery as well as those who've lost their lives to addiction. Local sources of funding have helped enormously to address behavioral health issues here at the community level. Local dollars such as those connected to the homelessness task force and the CD Mental Health or Heart Growth Fund have given us the ability to meet emergency needs and also fill community gaps. Tangible examples of this include financial support for the creation of the Clowdon County Respite Center for people in mental health crisis, case management services for people in jail, and the syringe services program to encourage them to get the treatment that they need. And also continued direct services funding for folks who don't have the resources to pay for their treatment. And then we've got upcoming funding of intervention specialists in the schools. Our public health section is meeting our community heroin crisis by distributing the lost stone in the storage services program and sponsoring needle cleanup activities in Port Angeles locations. Already there have been a number of lives saved through the distribution of the lost stone. Again, we're grateful for the support of the commissioners and the community in addressing our behavioral health needs and ensuring that our people have the best chance for recovery from behavioral health issues and the ability to live fruitful and meaningful lives. Do you happen to know Brittany is here from Peninsula? I guess not, but anyway.
Great, thanks, you're appreciated. And it is very welcome you to the community engaging on this very difficult and troublesome issue. So, that is a very good thing. And I appreciate the ones in the community that have got together and formed some organizations and highlighted the issues and problems that we see. So that's a good thing. Other reports, presentations, Commissioner Chatham?
I had a chat yesterday with the county attorney of the Comset Recycling Technology Center, the project for Port Angeles. Very well attended. It feels very good to be a party to some new business development in the county.
Indeed, I was there as well. That was a good occasion and happy that we reached that milestone. It was good to see the Governor and our Congressman Kilmer here in attendance as well. I, of course, the only thing I have to report is the County Association Board of Directors meeting, routine business last Friday. And out of that, or as a part of that, I'm gonna participate in a conference call. And Mike, I think you were invited to participate in a conference call as well. Gary Burnt, Commissioner from Kidattas County, who was a longtime DNR employee in the emergency fire response, probably not gonna get his job description quite right, but he was in the part of DNR that handled the aviation part of firefighting efforts with DNR and managing firefighting efforts and that kind of thing. I think there's widespread agreement at the time to exchange business cards and say hello to people is not in the midst of a conflagration or any other ongoing catastrophe, natural disaster. So, several of us are gonna participate in a conference call with some DNR folk to get. The conversation started amongst county commissioners, fire district commissioners, so on and so forth, so that we network ourselves in advance of an event, so that we understand each other, we know each other, we know each other's phone numbers, so on and so forth, before the event. The other big piece is volunteer management. Just like in youth soccer, you don't want all the kids running toward ball, you want them to play their position. An event, as we've just seen where the Department of Natural Resources calls for volunteers to augment their internal efforts, that, that requires some organization and some management, so that everybody doesn't rush in, clog the roads, get in each other's way and that kind of thing. That's, that's a, that's a welcome development, that folks wanna use their own private equipment resources and participate. That's gotta be organized and managed in a way that, that, you know, it's, it's a useful effort and doesn't detract from the overall effort. So, that's gonna be part of the conversation as well, I think. So that's a, that's a good conversation. That's, that's kind of an outgrowth of the Board of Directors meeting, but not fully associated with it. That'll be, that'll be ongoing. And that's my report. Do you have anything for you?
I would just add that I attended the ribbon cutting yesterday afternoon on our behalf for the, what was formerly the Family Medicine in Port Angeles downtown, their certification as a federally, a federal community clinic. And what I, what I heard was that in addition to all these new doctors and residencies that will now be allowed and partially funded by the federal government, it's made space for 4,000 new primary care patients down there. That we've had such a shortage in our community of being able to people to get docs. And so, I thought that was really well done. Representative Kilmer was there and did the opening. It was, it was, again, also well represented by a lot of people there.
Okay, contracts and agreements.
Item 2A is a agreement with Roddman's Inc. for the Dungeness Landing Pilot Replacement Project out of Lead One Projects Funds, total amount of $42,700.
Move to approve the contract with Roddman's Inc. On second. Move to the second. Discussion. All in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Item 2B is an agreement with Inner West Construction Inc. for the Courthouse Stormwater LID retrofit project, Lead Two project, in the total amount of $333,333.
Move to approve the contract with Inner West Construction Inc. On second. Move to second. Discussion. All in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Item 2C1 is a State of Washington Division of Behavioral Health and Recovery Agreement providing contract language and funding for Trillium Treatment Center in the amount of $30,812.
Move to approve the agreement with Trillium Treatment Center. Second. Noted this as just one agenda item.
2C, but we have it in our packets. There's one, two, three, four contracts, but it has to approve each contract.
Motion carries on each contract separately.
So that's why I called it 2C1.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, further discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Item 2C2 is the same State of Washington Division of Behavioral Health Agreement, providing funding for West End Outreach in the amount of $27,200.
Move to approve the contract with West End Outreach. Second. Discussion. All in favor? Aye, aye, opposed, motion carries.
Item 2C3 would be funding for Reflections Counseling Services Group in the amount of $95,500.
Move to approve the contract with Reflections Counseling Services Group. Second. Discussion. All in favor? Aye, aye, opposed, motion carries.
Item 2C4 is same contract with True Star Behavioral Health Services in the amount of $64,340.
Move to approve the contract with True Star Behavioral Health Services. Second. Discussion. All in favor? Aye, aye, opposed, motion carries.
Item 2D is an agreement with Peninsula Behavioral Health Funding, Behavioral Health Funding Staffing for the Clowdon County Respite Center, maximum amount $10,000.
Move to approve the agreement with Behavioral Health. On second. Discussion. All in favor? Aye, aye, opposed, motion carries.
Item 2E is an agreement prospectus with the Washington State Department of Transportation for the Black Mountain Road Safety Project, all as was discussed in work session on September 14th. Total cost $20,000, which does require a $2,000 local match from us.
Move to approve the prospectus. On second. Discussion. All in favor? Aye, aye, opposed, motion carries.
Item 2F is an agreement prospectus with Washington State Department of Transportation for the Garden Rail Improvement Project, which is a 2014 county safety program, also as discussed in work session on September 14th. Again, the same total cost $20,000, of which $2,000 of local match is our share.
Move to approve the agreement prospectus with Washington State Department of Transportation. All second. All, our discussion. All in favor? Aye, aye, opposed, motion carries.
Item 2G is an agreement prospectus with Washington State Department of Transportation for the Deer Park and Little River Roads Radar Speed Control Project, again, as discussed in work session on September 14th. Total cost of this project is $55,000. Our share, 10%, is $5,500.
Move to approve the agreement prospectus with Washington State Department of Transportation for the Deer Park and Little River Roads Project. On second. Discussion. All in favor? Aye, aye, opposed, motion carries.
And finally, item 2H is agreement prospectus with Washington State Department of Transportation for the Old Olympic Highway Center Line Rumble Strip Project, again, as discussed in work session on September 14th. Total cost $38,333, our share $3,833 local match.
Move to approve the agreement prospectus with Washington State Department of Transportation for the Center Line Rumble Strip Project. On second. Discussion. All in favor? Aye, aye, opposed, motion carries. Administration.
Item 3A is a notice of hearing to be held October 13th at 10:30 a.m. regarding proposed amendments to policy 505 budget changes and modifications.
Move to approve the notice of public hearing. On second. Discussion. All in favor? Aye, aye, opposed, motion carries.
Item 3B is a notice of public hearing to be held on Tuesday, October 6th at 10:30 a.m. on the proposed acquisition of donated property at Lake Crescent.
Move to approve the public hearing. On second. Discuss that just in work sessions. I will be in Olympia for the Board of Natural Resources for the hearing, but if action needs to be taken right then and there, that will be certainly possible and I support this. But I will be interested, of course, in hearing the, the comments, the testimony that will be given that day. So, we may wanna defer action for a week and I'll be able to listen to the hearing record and make my decision after, after that. So, anyway, whichever course of action I think would be, would be just fine. So, further discussion? All in favor? Aye, aye, opposed, motion carries. No bids and awards, no budget, no community development, no public works. Hearing, we just have to be ready at 10:30. So we will move into our public hearing on proposed resolution declaring certain property surplus and authorizing sale. And so, I will ask, and probably Ross, Mr. Turner, I don't think, is it not?
Actually, it's year in arm.
Year in arm.
Yeah. They're just asking for a lead into what we're doing here on the, on the.
If you wouldn't mind just introducing the hearing subject and let us know what it's all about.
Yeah, nothing here, just talking about the night. It's, this is the. It's, this is the surplus auction for 2016. We try and hold them annually, it's been a couple of years this time since we've had one, so there's a fair amount of equipment in it. What it is, is it's basically, it's equipment that's at the end of its useful life, and or is beyond its useful life, has managed to continue and serve beyond that, and it's gotten to a point where it's, you know, fiscally not advisable to keep it, in other words, just starting to nickel and dime us until we get rid of it. It's done by electronically, would be coming out.
Online.
Online, thank you. I'm still driving down, guys, I'm sorry. Anyway, yeah, it's an online auction, I run for ten days, we have a viewing date in the middle of the auction, so people have the opportunity to come down and take a look at it for the equipment for part of the day, and we established minimum bids mainly just, I mean, as a formality, because being a public agency, we can't leave it at zero, because we don't give anything away, it just kind of gets the ball rolling, those minimum bids are no more than that. And we have, Bob Martin, anyway, has contacted the other local agencies around the area, the cities and such, and they've had an opportunity to view the list and kind of give them first shot at it. There is a little bit of interest at this point on one piece of equipment, anyway, in particular, more with the city squim, but we have taken more back from them after they've taken a look at it, so what we're doing here is basically requesting, or going through the surplus public hearing process where we basically put the equipment out for public comment, basically, on our list of equipment, so. Questions? Questions from the board? It's, we've done it many times in the past, and just a lot of the last few years, we've been going online, I think we get better results, honestly, online than we did when we held it right up there in the yard with Stokes, somebody with the Gallow. That's it, like I said, questions, Jim?
Okay, questions from the board? We'll open the hearing. No one has signed up to provide testimony or comments, so is there anybody that's not signed up that wishes to be so? Seeing no one, what is the pleasure of the board regarding the hearing? Move to close the public hearing. On second, discussion. All in favor? Aye. Close. And what is the pleasure of the board regarding the resolution? Move to approve the resolution. On second, discussion. All in favor?
Question?
Yes.
Just to clarify, Vern mentioned to me, I think I may have said 2016 public auction, in fact, it's the, obviously, 2015.
Correct.
Just for the record, wrong year.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Close. Motion carries, resolution approved. That's it for regular business, except for public comments.
The minutes, September seventh through eleven, get held. The minutes for September seventh through eleven, get held.
That's the one when we have pro temp commissioner, they weren't available.
Right, so they weren't adopted.
Correct.
That's correct.
We're waiting here back for Mark or that, or not, Mr. Mike, I need to see if he's in case of something, the vote on that, and whether we would then, the pro temp commissioner back in.
So there's just not been considered at this time?
Yeah, there were.
Yeah, we consented in, it just not been.
We postponed, we removed that, so we considered the end of postponed in depth, I think, as per secondary procedure, and we'll figure out how that moves forward. About the comments.
My name's Michael Ray, live to six one seven south E, and I have a couple of follow-up candidates, one was regarding, I don't want to say allocation, I guess an allocation of a violation of public meetings that I made back in July, I still stand by all of the facts that I think I represented that day, but the chairman in the newspaper accused me of something like a foul blast of partisan politics. I don't think it was that, I think any time a citizen comes in and wants to correct something is for public process in any local government, it should be treated a little more respectful. Now, if somebody challenged my statement of the record, that would be great, I'd be very willing to amend my thoughts that I put into the record that day, but as a follow-up, I did put in a public records request, and today I plan to submit to the prosecuting attorney a list of the, or a packet of the emails regarding that topic, and to me, it clearly shows that two county commissioners did communicate outside of the public meeting, in fact, had physical meetings with the representative of the timber company regarding the matter that took place in the work session while I was gone. You remember, I was down Stanford, talking, speaking on the panel about climate change, I checked the agenda for the work session, and there was nothing regarding this item, and later I listened to the audio file, and there's no amended agenda, but the item is discussed, and then there's an action taken where the board decides, instead of taking the resolution that was proposed by the timber company and acting on that, and clearly all three signature lines were on that paper, again, I was never informed of that, but an action was taken to submit individual letters, and so in the packet, the letters that went to DNR are included among other things in the packet. So then, at the 10 o'clock meeting, that was one of those weeks, the odd weeks where there's a holiday, so at nine thirty, nine o'clock, there's the work session, actions taken around 10, 20, 6, 7, somewhere in there. Half an hour later, I've been on the line, because I had looked at the agenda, and I was usually, I was pretty good about calling in to meetings, my attendance was quite good, so I called in, nobody referenced that item, hadn't been taken up, and it could have been postponed until 10, and all three commissioners participated, but it wasn't, so nobody references that, there's no amended agenda, there was never even a notice, so without notice to the third commissioner, there should be notice of all matters to all three commissioners before there's action taken. So I'll pass that on to prosecutor today, and I know he has great discretion on what he picks to look at, but I hope he would look into this. And again, I stand by the facts that I referenced that day, and were part of the record. The second item is just a quick, I disagree with some of the way the timber advisory committee is being set up, and I did get an invite as a subgroup member of the Charter Review Commission at the last work session that the board discussed this, that was the only work session where you didn't entertain members of the subgroup coming up and chatting with the board, and in three other meetings, in the work session, members who favored the item were invited to come up and talk to the commissioners. The one, and I didn't get notice of those, ironically, now those three members could have been just wandering around the courthouse and conveniently have this simple meeting that day, but I don't think that's what happened. But the one meeting where I did get notice, that the subcommittee may be talking with the commissioners, the chair of the board didn't invite any input that day, and then the next day you adopted the resolution, which, best research I can do, that resolution was drafted by a member of the Board of Directors of the timber company, I see very few words that were changed by county staff or county commissioners setting that up. The consultant that's been hired, you know, I know Phil Kitchell like most of you, not as well as at least two of you do, very well, and for him to be hired, to me, is pretty short sighted, you know, he has a 20-year bias on the issue, he has no real professional credential to do this type of very important economic analysis for the future of the county, so it may be a little late to put Kitchell back in the model, but I think it's going to be, there'll be accusations of a very biased process, so I'd just like that on the record, and as you may know, there was a time when Mr. Kitchell and I ran for county commissioner together, and in one of my campaigns, I had 13 current and former county commissioners took a visit to conveyance, and in favor of what I was talking about during the campaign. To me, that's pretty good evidence of how commissioners in those days thought about that issue, so it's a concern to me, and I just hope that the process is very open, and I hope the best of economic analysis services, because it's very important, item not just in our lifetime, but it could ever, and with agents all across the state, and certainly in the future of final counties' economies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead for you. Can you speak, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Morning, Jimmy. I would like to speak about my block watch setting up in my area.
May I ask for your name, please?
Deborah Grillon-Dude.
Yeah.
I used to read Josh's, I should have your copy every Tuesday morning.
Remember you will.
Yes, thank you, thank you for that. My question is this, I have a huge concern about the people in our neighborhoods, because all these heroin addicts and all these people who are walking around the street, and I, this gentleman knows, I was a neighborhood watcher, the city hall meeting with some friends of mine, what are you going to do about these criminals? I would like to know why this guy is stopped on First Street with how many thousands of dollars and how many grams of heroin and how many guns in his car last Saturday evening? Are you aware of that?
Well, yes.
Yes, you are.
From the newspaper account.
Okay, there you go. I would like to know what you're going to do about that. What are you, what are we proposing to do? Neighborhood block watches aren't working, because other than showing a baseball bat or a pistol, which is what people are talking about, I've been to several home meetings in the city in my neighborhood for neighborhood block watches that are basically going towards vigilante, and I'm not, I'm not cool with that either. No, I'm not cool with raccoons, I'm not cool with any of it, I just learned a nice city to live in, and people say, this is the people's city to live in, not if you walk, not if you walk, it's not a cool place to live. You know, there's people parked outside of the little kids park over here, in where they play, the little kids park, Erickson Park, they're parked there, and somebody's in their home, and I talked to police about it, they're fine to stay there because they have no warrants out of their rest, they have nothing going on, but they're homeless, and they're sleeping in a car right by the double restroom where little kids go. I find this a little frightening, because I walk through there. So I would like to know what your department, or who do I talk to, of course, you're the attorney, you're the prosecutor, who do I talk to? Because the block watches aren't working.
I would suggest the city police department and the.
I talked to Mr. Gallagher, trust me.
Right. But we, the commissioners, don't have direct responsibility for law enforcement or prosecuting crimes or any of that stuff, that's the, that's the province of the city PD, if it's a matter within the city of Port Angeles, or Forbes, or Squim, or the sheriff's department, if it's in the county, outside the incorporated areas.
If I'm frightened to leave here, there's a problem.
Right.
That's what I'm saying, that's why I'm here today.
Yes, ma'am.
So, nice seeing you again.
Very nice seeing you too. Thanks for coming.
I will contact you later on to see what I can do.
All right. Anyone else?
My name is Tyler Crow, I work at Reploring, Port Angeles, South Mountain, Paris Way. In response to Mr. Doherty's ongoing comments regarding the potential conflict of interest or the allegations, I may or may not be an employee of the timber company that he keeps referencing, giving all these remarks that are indirect, I would say as a small, private, family-owned business in his community, any potentially disparaging remarks are taken very seriously by us, and any conflict of interest is taken very serious by us, we invite him to come and speak to us, and speak directly, and have an open discussion about any of these remarks or anything that's transpired.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, that concludes our business today. Appreciate everybody's being here, there will be a, excuse me, a meeting of the Williams Shore Memorial Pool District, 3 p.m. this afternoon noon, where two commissioners will be in attendance. Thursday, there's the monthly interview with K1P Radio, there may be one or more, there will be one commissioner, maybe more than one commissioner there for Thursday's interview at 1 p.m. So that's, that's the rest of the calendar, and we will adjourn today's meeting and continue the meeting until next Monday at, excuse me, nine o'clock for our work session.